January 28th, 2025. This is a school budget public hearing and we are glad you're here because we like to hear from you too and that will come up very shortly. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Lisa Penne cuff, our interim superintendent, to give a review of what she did last week. Thank you, ma'am. And in accordance with policy one dash six point nine, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations, Mr. Bob May will participate in this evening's meeting by phone due to him recovering from surgery. Mr. May, you still with us?
I am, Mr. Vice Chair. Welcome.
All right. I don't want to translate that, but I'm glad you're here. Dr. Penne cuff, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman May, Vice Chairman Ikembeary and School Board members. Thank you for being here with us this evening. I will begin with a brief overview of what's new in the FY 26 budget. This year, the highlights include a 3% salary increase for all eligible employees effective July 1. We have included $1.4 million to cover a significant portion of the rising healthcare costs for calendar year 2025. There is $4.5 million to lift the teacher's salary scale. This is our greatest investment of the year. This investment is necessary to bring the Hanover County teachers out of the bottom third of the divisions in our region. Additionally, there's a continuation of the substitute incentive program. We have two school psychologist interns to work on our Grow Your Own program, four middle school assistant track and field coaches to be sure that our children have the most opportunities to participate in school activities and events that we can build each year, the continuation of six slots at Code RVA that were added this year and now built into the ongoing funding, tuition increases for Maggie L. Walker, Governor's School, Code RVA, and one of our regional programs for students with disabilities, the implementation of a better way athletics. Additionally, we have our capital improvement plan. The five-year highlights include the expansion of the Hanover Center for Trades and Technology. We are formally identifying Mechanicsville Elementary School as our next replacement school. That school will be designed in 2028 with a targeted opening for the 2030-2031 school year. Following that, we will also have the rebuild of another campus-style elementary school and that one is targeted for 2033. Here's a summary of the adjustments that are made to the budget this year and you can see that the capital improvement line is coming down because some of our schools are being built and those funds have already been allocated for for that. So overall, you see the change at the bottom and now we are ready, Mr. Ikembeary, for you to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Penne cuff.
Thank you.
We'd like to begin our procedures for public comment. This is an opportunity for the School Board to receive public input regarding the fiscal year 2026 budget prior to the approval of the superintendent's proposed budget. Speakers are requested to follow these guidelines. As each speaker is recognized by the chairperson, the speaker is asked to clearly state his or her name and address for the board of managerial districts. Speakers are asked to address their comments to the board and not to the audience. The board requests that the audience refrain from responding to the speaker's comments with applause or other audible expressions of approval or disapproval. The time allotted to each speaker is three minutes. Speakers receive notification from Ms. Welch. When time has expired, she'll be giving you 30 seconds to remind you that you have 30 seconds. Although the board does not permit the use of slideshows or other projected materials during the segment, speakers are invited to provide printed copies of such materials to the board. The board expresses its appreciation for the public's input and cooperation during the segment of the meeting. And right now, I see we've got five speakers and again, this is a budget public hearing comment period just on the budget. So hopefully we stay strictly to the budget of what we've heard. Okay? Ms. Welch?
Yes, thank you. Brennan Neal, you're going to be our first public commenter and then we have Elise Pyron is up next.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Penne cuff, senior staff. My name is Brennan Neal and I am the president of Hanover Professional Educators, HPE. Our organization represents teachers and other school employees, including many who have faithfully served the county for decades. Our association surveyed our members in the week since Dr. Penne cuff presented her proposed FY 26 budget and we vote to endorse this plan. They support the 3% salary increase for all employees as well as the 6.8 average raise for teachers. We appreciate the $4.5 million to lift the teacher's scale as well as the $1.4 million to cover increased healthcare costs. We believe these are all critical and very much necessary. We do ask that if additional funding does become available at some point, the following groups should receive some targeted enhancement, our IAs, instructional assistants, teachers with more than 35 years of experience, and our administrative support staff. These three job families, we believe, do work that is critical to the success of our students and our IAs especially, we feel, continue to be underpaid, especially for the hard work they perform with some of our more vulnerable populations of students. Our members appreciate the hard work that was put into this plan as well as the collaboration between Dr. Penne cuff, our senior staff members, the county administration. We want to especially thank Mandy Baker for communicating with us and answering some of our questions we had as the budget was being rolled out. So again, we do believe that this budget represents an improvement for our public schools and it rewards our hardworking employees and enhances the quality of our education that our citizens have come to expect from our schools. So we do ask that you approve her proposed budget and we ask that you continue this momentum forward in the coming years to continue rewarding our hardworking employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elise Pyron and then Susan Neemzik.
Good evening. My name is Elise Pyron. I live off Hewlett Trail Drive in Ashland. I'm in the Beaver Dam District and work at Ashland Elementary as a preschool special education instructional assistant. Last month, I stood here to ask for pay raises for instructional assistance and here I am again, but asking for a higher increase than just 3%. Let me just break that down for everyone here. If an IA is lucky enough to be making $27,000 a year, that 3% raise will get them an extra $30 a paycheck. You can't fill a tank of gas with that. I am ultimately here to work for the right for IAs to earn a livable wage. The definition of a livable wage is a wage that is high enough to maintain a normal standard of living. According to the Livable Wage Calculator from MIT, to live in Hanover County with only one adult working and no children, you need to make at least $24.63 an hour. With just one child, that livable wage goes up to $40.15. A single mom with one child needs to make at least $40 an hour to survive in our county without assistance. Our starting pay is $23,000. That is a little over $14 an hour for only 10 months. Once you stretch out $23,000 for 12 months, that $14 is a lot less an hour. Let's think about that for a moment. Principals, superintendents, teachers, association leaders, all hail IAs as a pillar of the schools and classrooms. They praise us for going above and beyond our contract duties and thank us for our service, but the gratitude they express isn't reflected in our pay. Instead, many IAs are left working multiple jobs and applying for government assistance. There is no doubt in my mind that I love my job, most of us do, but that love does not pay the bills and allow me to live. IAs are told that the work we do is essential to the school community and yet we are overworked employees who live closer to homelessness than most would like to admit. Our jobs, IAs, are extremely vital to the education of the students in the schools. Without IAs, the teachers would not be able to properly give the students what they needed for their education each day. As it is now, we are doing the job of two to three people because we just don't have enough IAs to support the needs of each student. I usually handle four and tend to support children on my own and sometimes it could be more if I'm in the classroom and the teacher is working with another student. Ask any teacher who relies on an IA for support if they could survive without them and they will all tell you no. There would be no educational experiences happening and as the IAs are the main ones who implement the IEPs and the teachers' plans, the classrooms would be in total chaos, as is the IAs who help calm the upset children, deal with behaviors, quietly sit with the children who need the extra support next to them while the teacher teaches. We are there to help our teachers and take some of their stress from them. I cannot express enough how IAs are the literal backbone of every school. Our support and assistance are invaluable to student learning. We play a fundamental role in the success of students in the school community, yet we struggle to make ends meet. You ask us to educate, feed, engage, and support students in their path to grow, learn, and thrive, but without the pay we rightfully deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have Susan Neemzik and then Troy Forehand.
Glad I brought my readers. Good evening, members of the School Board and Superintendent Penne cuff. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the dedicated speech-language pathologists serving the students in Hanover County Public Schools. Our role is vital, not only for their academic success, but also for their social, emotional, and developmental well-being. As many of you know, the prevalence of autism spectrum disorders has been rising steadily over the past few years. The CDC now reports that one in 36 children are diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder. This increases the demand for speech-language services. I'm sure everyone in this room probably knows someone who has been touched by autism. In addition, with continuous advancements in medical technology, more premature infants and those with disabilities are surviving these days, leading to an increased need for early intervention services from speech pathologists. The current workload for speech pathologists is demanding and the paperwork is seemingly never-ending. We are dedicated, though, to providing the best possible care, but the reality is that we are very spread thin. We are trying to meet the needs of every child while balancing the paperwork, new referrals, evaluations, daily responsibilities, meetings, IEPs, et cetera. Our neighboring counties have started compensating their speech pathologists significantly more. For example, I worked in Chesterfield County for 18 years before coming here this year and right after I left, they approved our pay raise and I could be making $13,000 more in Chesterfield than I do here. That's a significant number and that contributes to staff turnover and makes it harder for us to attract and retain qualified speech pathologists in our district. When we are not fully staffed, it ultimately affects the children who need our help the most. It's important to remember that SLPs are not just educators. We are highly trained professionals with specialized degrees and certifications from both the American Speech Language and Hearing Association as well as the Department of Health professions. We also helped this district provide, we generate revenue through our Medicaid billing for the district by utilizing our credentials to bring much-needed funding into our schools. Despite this current compensation, it doesn't reflect the level of expertise or value that we bring to the district. I urge the board to recognize the importance of the work we do and consider increasing the compensation for speech pathologists in Hanover County to match the rising demands of our profession and provide competitive pay as other counties are doing. By doing so, you would not only be valuing the professionals who serve our children, but also ensuring that our students receive the early and critical interventions that they need to succeed. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to working together to ensure our children's needs are met and that our professionals are supported in doing our important work.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Troy Forehand and then Bob Flanagan?
Good. Good evening, Chairman May, Vice Chairman Ikembeary, School Board members, and Dr. Penne cuff. I am Troy Forehand. I'm a resident of the Beaver Dam District and here tonight representing the School's Business Advisory Council and Hanover Education Foundation. I'm also the husband of a former teacher at Patrick Henry, the father of a teacher at Liberty Middle School, and the grandfather of a future student in our school system. Twenty local business partners gathered at a joint meeting of the Business Advisory Council and Hanover Education Foundation last week to hear Dr. Penne cuff and Terry Stone share the FY 2026 budget. After hearing the full presentation, both groups want to share their support of the proposed budget. Specifically, we appreciate the necessary and intentional funding of salary raises for employees and even more for our teachers. We all know the reality with salary compression and I'm glad to see intentionality in addressing this problem. We don't want to lose our greatest assets, the hundreds of top-notch teachers that would make Hanover schools among the best in the state. Secondly, we are very proud to see the expansion of the Hanover County Center for Trades and Technology and addition of specialty and Code RVA seats. Giving our high school students more access to technical training of many kinds is absolutely essential and critically important to meet future workforce needs in our community. These opportunities, these open opportunities for students following graduation and keep them engaged in real-life applications during their teen years. We hope to continue to see funding in those areas in the future. Lastly, I want to share appreciation to school leaders for their work alongside Hanover County leaders to ensure the many building improvements prioritized in this budget. Too many of our school buildings have lagged behind their usefulness for many, many reasons. It's refreshing to show our current and even our youngest learners across the county will benefit from renovations and new buildings. If you have any questions about what I've shared or want to talk more, please be in touch with me personally or through Melissa Haley, Executive Director of Hanover Education Foundation. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Bob Flanagan?
Good evening and I want to thank everybody that is here for everything and all that you do. Admitted earlier this evening that I'm a little embarrassed to talk about the pennies and the millions and break things down, but I did want to come from a certain perspective and discuss briefly equality and appreciation for some of our coaching staff. As far as that goes, my parents were both educators at Patch Henry and Henry Clay. I'm a second-generation coach in the county, so we have great appreciation for everything that all of you do. Thank you very much. What I'm discussing is pages 124 through 126 of your budget and it breaks down the stipend tracks for the different sports. I understand, for example, football being in a different bracket as they bring in funds with the ticket sales, et cetera, et cetera. We then have the vast majority of the sports, soccer, cross-country, indoor track, wrestling, softball, baseball, field hockey, lacrosse, gymnastics, drama, publication, soda, seventh up, volleyball, all on one stipend. And for some reason, swimming, golf, and tennis are the only three on their own. What I'm looking at is as to why this might be, that they are seen as different or inferior to the other sports. I'm going to pick on one. Those who know me know how much I love the sport and will understand why I'm picking on that one. The difference between a head coach at stipend eight and a head coach at stipend six is $775 in the first year. I've been coaching for 15 years. It only grows. The second year, it goes up to 787. Where I am now, it's $908 per year. Over my career, the difference is $13,811. I waited 15 years until I was ending or getting close to the end of my career, so this is not about me. I'm not looking for more money and I definitely don't want to take anything from the educators. With that being said, there is quite a disparity. The sport that I mentioned I was picking on was volleyball. Anybody that knows me knows my kids and their relationship to that sport and how much I love it. Their coaches do a phenomenal job. They order uniforms, they keep the balls, the net, the poles, all in working order. They show up to a school-maintained gym, have paid referees on staff that come to all the games, and need to find two to four volunteers. We also have caps and suits and timers, counters, but we have to find four to six unpaid officials. They actually pay for their own education. We end up having to find 21 volunteers for a meet, software maintenance. I basically, and I'm running out of time, so I thank you very much, but don't see the difference. Sorry, I didn't hear it, but I see it now. I don't see the difference as to why these three sports are seen as lesser than. Happy to discuss anything and that was not a dig on volleyball. Congratulations, Hanover County, for 10 straight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. You're well-heard, believe me. Yep. Okay, for our next steps, Ms. Stone, would you like to take the podium? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman at a distance, Mr. Vice Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Penne cuff. So what we have now are our next steps in regards to the budget process. We had set aside February 4th is a potential additional budget work session, should it be needed or if there were inclement weather. So while that's not listed here, that was a potential date and we can discuss whether or not you all would like to have that meeting. But with or without that meeting, on February 11th, we will come back together and will be requesting approval of the superintendent's proposed budget. At that point, it becomes the School Board's approved budget and then that would be sent to the County Board of Supervisors and on February 19th, we would make a presentation to the Board of Supervisors of that School Board-approved budget. Next, on April 2nd, is the Hanover County Board of Supervisors' public hearing. On April 9th, the Board of Supervisors are slated for adoption of their final budget and then based upon those numbers and any changes in the General Assembly, hopefully we would have them by May 13th, we would come back to you and look for final adoption of the fiscal year 2026 School Board budget. So those are our next steps and if you would like to consider now whether or not you think we need to meet next week.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stone.
Thank you.
I failed to close public comment and so I'm trying to stay parliamentering. Am I okay, Ms. Brown? Okay, just to make sure. Dr. Penne cuff and I and Ms. Welch, over the course of the last two days, visited the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference and we spent half a day there yesterday and then today we were entertained by members of our General Assembly, Mr. Buddy Fowler, Mr. Scott Wyatt, and Senator Ryan McDougall. And we were able to spend good 15 to 40 minutes entertaining and bending their ear about when the state gets around to getting their act together because they only have about three more weeks in their short session, session this year, they alternate years, and they will pass an enormous amount of legislation. Right now, there's some significant pieces of legislation that affect education and every year, some of that money comes from the state to Hanover County. We don't know what kind of an amount it is, but again, I would encourage you as citizens, part of your civic duty, just like I felt like it's part of our civic duty, to elevate our needs and wants, so to speak, to our lawmakers and we were very specific with them. We not only talked about operations, has been the topic mostly today, but we also spoke about our capital improvement plans, that we've got two elementary schools that are going to be built and we've got another one to follow shortly thereafter and we are enlarging and expanding our trade center. And so these are the kind of projects that it was welcome to all their ears unanimously, but again, they can't tell us how they can help us monetarily. So again, I would encourage citizens of this county to send them an email or write them the old-fashioned way with paper and pen and lick it and put an envelope and send it. And again, that's what we did and we're using our position in order to do that for the citizens of this county. So that's just one other step that, since this was a next steps for Ms. Stone, well, this is the next steps for, we're all on the same page here. We all want what's best for our children in this county and we also want to have our instructional environment for our teachers to be safe and secure and them to have adequate supplies and to stay in Hanover County. We want to continue to retain them and I know Ms. Baker does her due diligence to have that happen, so I applaud that. So with that, anything else? Dr. Penne cuff?
I think we just need the board to make a decision if you would like to forego the February 4th work session that we had put on as possible. We do not believe that we will have any additional information before the February 4th date. We don't think we will have any additional information until both chambers of the General Assembly come out with their proposed budgets.
Okay. Mr. May, Mr. Chair, I haven't heard from you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ikembeary. You're doing an excellent job and I appreciate you filling in for me. With that being said, I just would like to say that I'm not real sure that there's much we can do in a work session next week since we really don't know anything different we have today. That's, of course, an opinion, but I'm not absolutely positive that I've heard anything that's going to give us any flexibility, though. The flexibility will come once we hear if the state is going to increase any funding to us at all and then we can work through how we allocate those resources. That's just my view of the world and you've got a very positive mental attitude if you believe that by this weekend, we're going to see a unified, both chambers come out with a budget something other that we can use. I know that they're talking about releasing something this weekend, but whether they're going to be the same or not will be interesting. So we're still, we're still weeks away from any hyper resolution on that stuff, in my opinion, as I read the tea leaves, but I guess we need to poll the board. Do the board members feel like we need to have a work session next week? So I turn it back to you, Mr. Ikembeary, please.
Thank you, Mr. May. I appreciate it. Discussion, board members? No, I don't think, I don't think we need it. Okay. Mark, you agree?
I agree. I think the sentiment that we heard today was that it wasn't going to, there was going to be no news till May 4th.
Right. Okay, well, we have crossover day, February 4th, Mr. Whitley. Okay, and again, that's the day where they flip-flop bills with each chamber and so that's still in the future and so I don't see a need for it and I'll echo Mr. May and the rest of the board.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One last comment. Sorry, I'm trying to get my speaker off. Sorry, I'm trying to get my speaker off. One last comment. I believe HYA is going to still present to us next week, if I'm not mistaken, on the 4th. I believe that's right. And so we would still, we, the board, would still probably need to get together to hear that. The issue is, I'm not sure we need to have any more budget discussion. Am I right on that, Ms. Stone?
That is correct.
Correct. There's a meeting scheduled at 5:00 PM with HYA to receive additional information in regards to the superintendent's search process.
But there's nothing for the budget.
Correct.
Correct. Anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? We've had a motion and we've had a second. Is there a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. Thank you all for coming out.